The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right. Yes. Let's start the business meeting for June 3, 2020. Please stand for the flag allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They roll call, please.
Councilman Skrenji.
Present.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strawn. Councilman Strawn must be absent, but sure he'll be joining us shortly. And then President Scanlon.
Present.
So that's six here with one absent, Strawn.
Okay, I know acknowledgements and recognitions. Councilwoman Riley and Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
All right, well, good afternoon, council and those that are watching. We want to recognise the high school seniors. This week, we will be recognising the class of 2020 from Seton with a proclamation. Unfortunately, because we're not able to be together, I'm going to read the proclamation to you. Whereas the Seton Catholic Central class of 2020 will embark on new and exciting chapters in their lives after graduation. And whereas these students have shown determination, grit, and unwavering resolve to complete their degrees during these challenging and unprecedented times due to the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas these students are commended for their creative efforts to successfully earn their diplomas through unusual and diverse circumstances. Whereas all members of the senior class have been accepted into institutions of higher education and military. And whereas members of the senior class are guided by the simple, yet profound Christian message of love and service that transcends two millennia, and they are engaged in numerous ways to assist the most vulnerable members of our community. And whereas members of the senior class have completed over 11,000 hours of community service. And whereas members of the senior class were leaders in many extracurricular activities, including mathletes, robotics, select chorus, concert choir, pro-life club, and mock trial, furthering the institution's objectives of educating the whole student mentally, physically, and spiritually. And whereas members of the class of 2020 led Seton Catholic Central's athletic teams to success this year, including the boys varsity basketball team as they won the sectional championship, the girls varsity basketball team as they were runners-up in sectional finals, students won the congressional application challenge, Amazon engineering challenge, first place in the science Olympiad event, first, second, and third in BOSI's engineering competitions. Now therefore being resolved that we, the members of this common council of the city of Binghamton in the county of Broom in the state of New York, on behalf of all residents of the city of Binghamton, do hereby proclaim that the third day of June 2020 shall be in honour of the Seton Catholic Central class of 2020. So let's give them a round of applause and recognise them as they celebrate their efforts this year.
I am a graduate of that high school. So, bravo.
Councilwoman Resnetti, would you like anything?
Yes, if I could just quickly make a comment. First of all, thank you, Councilwoman Riley, for doing this, for taking the lead. And what an amazing list of achievements for this class. So, Seton Catholic Central class of 2020, you really should be so proud of all your accomplishments. You certainly are beautiful examples of empowerment and intelligence. And without a doubt, your senior year has been filled with challenges. You are definitely graduating during difficult times. But these times have made you stronger, that made you kinder, more giving, more mindful of your responsibility to be fair and just to all. And so those experiences have prepared you to do great things, I have no doubt. So shoot for the stars, congratulations.
Thank you, well, Councilwoman Riley, thank you, Councilwoman Resnetti.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Approval minutes, approval, approval of the minutes for May 20, 2020 business meeting. Councilman Strawn, please.
We should let the record show that Councilman Strawn did arrive electronically at 6:33. I apologize, my internet got blanked for a minute and I had to put an extension code on the router, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for approval of the minutes for the May 20, 2020 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Onto public comment, right?
Yes.
On the public comment, please, it's quick, we'll give the phone number to call. And please call in.
Okay. So the number to call in tonight is area code 607-772-7101. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and whether or not you are a citizen. Are you here to comment during public comment? All right, what's your name and where are you from? Okay, I'll patch you through.
Okay, this is Jordan, a Binghamton resident.
Hello, am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just want to comment on the ongoing situation with protests in Binghamton related to, you know, police brutality in general. It was kicked off by the murder of George Floyd, but I feel like it's being, it's prompting for a lot of residents of Binghamton, a lot of emotions about instances of racist violence in Binghamton, whether it's from police or from school, from, you know, school systems. My comment basically is that I think it's time to open up a discussion of defunding the police and dedicating that funding to mental health, health services, social welfare. That's my comment.
Thank you for calling in, we appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
All right.
And that number again is 772-7101. We'll wait a couple more minutes here and see if anybody else calls in to comment.
Lee, can you please read that number one more time?
Uh, yes. The number to call in for public comment is area code 607-772-7101.
All right, we'll move on. Onto the preferred agenda. Hold on. Go back up, 2049, second reading?
Correct.
Okay. Let's go to second reading legislation, introductory ordinance 20-49, consider planning. Councilman Strawn, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-49, an ordinance to allow the sale of tobacco products at 494.5 Shenango Street.
Second.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Um, I would just like to make one last comment to explain my reasoning behind the vote that I'm going to cast tonight. This is second read legislation, so it's been, you know, it's apparent that this has been a lengthy discussion that has happened and, you know, we keep saying over and over again, we're not taking this lightly. You know, and it's particularly tough since this is a business that is trying to open up in my district. And I do want to bring economic prosperity to my district. It's a local business owner, this has been something that I've been thinking about for a long time. However, I am looking at this as weighing the pros and cons, or rather, I mean, weighing the pros and cons, but more so looking at, you know, what will bring the most benefit. And while I do believe that bringing economic, you know, opportunity to the district is very important, I don't want to do it at the expense of the health of our children. And I know that even though, yes, we can split hairs, that technically this business is in violation of the zoning regulations, but, you know, it's almost not. But I, I am gonna, you know, I have sought input from a lot of stakeholders and there have been mostly people that have come to me that would not be happy to have another tobacco retailer near a school. And I do think that, you know, we have to keep the health of our children in mind because they are vulnerable. And so I don't, I know I sound like a broken record, I don't want to sound like I'm taking this decision lightly, but I am trying to follow my gut and do this thing that I believe will be the most beneficial for my district.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other, Councilwoman Riley?
Thank you, President Scanlon. This is, again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I think I've been consistent in my messaging regarding this legislation. Policy changed, and this is the first time it has been brought to city council. And as city council members, we must reflect upon the legislation that was passed by our previous council members in 2014 and amended in 2019, which is why we, again, hold the seats we hold. This is hard. It is hard because we all, in our platforms, supported economic development. And this is a man who has come and wants to launch a new business in our city, which, again, as Councilwoman Friedman mentioned, is what we all strive for, what we all desire as a growing city. However, I think I must highlight that this also shows some holes or flaws in the way we recruit our business people, the process in which they're given guidance and directives. Submitted a proposal to another committee, and obviously someone did not know about this one piece, or did not provide that information to him when the proposal was approved without this section addressed. And so that is an issue. And perhaps maybe we need to go back and talk about laws and ordinances and what the roles of various committees are when establishing relationships and pushing plans forward for new businesses. So it is tough, but again, I look at the health of a community. I look at what I would want in my community. And we have to advocate using those tools and the voices from our constituents that guided us, not only our last council meeting, but through the letters that we received as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments on this? Councilman Burns.
Yes, hi. I just want to say with, with all due respect to my two colleagues, and I have grandchildren who I'm certainly worried about their health, and I have a daughter who's a principal at an elementary school who is in total agreement with my two colleagues. However, I feel that the, and I spoke to Angela about this earlier today, that I feel that the spirit of the law is 500 feet from the school. And this man bought the building, he knew the 500 feet from what I understand, and from his door to the school is a little bit over 500 feet. Unless you're traveling by hot air balloon, in which case somehow the tax map, the map makes it less than 500 feet, but the actual walk to his door is 500 feet. His competition, which are less than 500 feet, are able to sell the cigarettes. And there's a new law coming in, in July, the New York State passed that the governor has signed, where all three of these stores are going to be forced, anybody within 1,500 feet are going to be forced to hide the cigarettes, they're going to be, not be able to advertise the cigarettes anywhere where the children would be able to see it. So any adult that wants the cigarettes at any store will have to ask for the cigarettes the same way at Weiss I have to ask for the garbage bags. So I feel that this man went to the planning board and Angela's 100% right that this should not be coming to us at the end of the line. This should, Angela, you're so right, this should have been, and it's not, I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the fault of anybody. I think that this is something new, this is the first time we've had to do this. So I'm asking the planning departments that next time this, anything like this happens, that maybe we are the first people to approve it before, maybe the person is going to change their mind if they think they can't sell the cigarettes. But at any rate, I'm going to vote yes because I think this man has come to this country and I don't want to be unfair to him. So, at the end of the day here, so that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I don't want to sound like a broken record. I still appreciate all the comments from my colleagues here tonight. And this has been a really difficult decision. And no matter what, I think that this was a really good example of how we can really debate and come together and do the best that we can for our community. And certainly anybody who supports this is not against our children's health in the community, it's just there are, you know, different sides to every issue. And so I just wanted to say that I have really very much appreciated this process with you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else like to comment?
Call a question, Mr. President.
Questions or calls, please?
Uh, Councilman Skrenji.
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Nay.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Strawn.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Okay, that's five ayes, two nays, Riley and Friedman.
introductory ordinance 20-49 passes. That's on the preferred agenda, would anybody like anything removed from the preferred agenda? See, no one, let's move on. introductory ordinance 20-50, consider planning, Councilman Strawn.
Yeah, I can.
These are, these are, these are on the preferred agenda, they don't have to be read.
All right, I'll let Lee read these, we don't have to read these?
Yeah, Lee just gives out the title.
Exactly.
Okay, so the first item tonight on the preferred agenda is introductory ordinance 20-50, considered in planning. And it's an ordinance to temporarily amend or waive chapter 327 rights of way use of Article II outdoor cafe permits, chapter 410 zoning, section 410-45 categories of review, and the fee schedule for the site plan review of outdoor seating.
Questions or comments on this?
The next item is introductory.
Councilman Burns, did you wish to be recognised on that?
No, no, thanks. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. So introductory ordinance 20-51, considered in finance.
Actually, I'm so sorry, can I ask a question about that last legislation?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Sorry, it took me a second to process my question, I apologize. So this one, I know in the legislation it says that the waiver will end as soon as any special restrictions on, in New York State. And I'm wondering, is it possible for a business owner to then, but let's say if a business owner then wanted to maintain the outdoor seating, they would have to go through the entire normal outdoor cafe permit procedure, is that correct?
Sharon, do you want to?
Did my question make sense?
Yes, your question makes sense. So the businesses that are in operation when New York State restrictions are lifted that have been priorly approved as by the administrative department of the planning, the planning department, should continue. However, it is possible, depending on the basis of the lifting of those restrictions, that a normal permit process through the clerk's office would have to occur. I mean, right now, it looks like the administrative approvals, once given, will stand, and that would only apply to new requests for approval, not priorly approved by the administrative department. Essentially, it's an administrative review, various outdoor cafe permits generally have to go through Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No worries, we're in uncharted territories here. And so the sunset language is written as broadly as possible to be both friendly to business owners, but also understanding that some restrictions may be lifted and therefore the impediments on either public or private property would then cease.
Thank you, Sharon, other questions?
Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, Lee, go ahead.
Okay. Then we'll move on to introductory ordinance 20-51, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to amend the 2020 engineering and IT budgets for surveying equipment.
Questions or comments? Here, Lee, move on, please.
Next is introductory ordinance 20-52, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Binghamton Johnson City joint sewage treatment facilities budget to refund one previously defunded mechanic's assistant position.
Questions or comments on this?
And the final item on the preferred agenda is introductory resolution 20-45, considered in finance. This is a resolution authorising the mayor to enter into a one-year extension with Arvin Emergency Medical Services to provide ambulance billing services.
Questions or comments on that?
Yes.
Mr. President, motion, motion to approve the agenda items on the preferred agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, so Councilman Skrenji.
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Strawn.
Aye.
And President Scanlon.
Aye.
So that's seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, onto the non-preferred agenda. introductory resolution 20-46, considered planning, Councilman Strawn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked the city council to consider introductory resolution 20-46, a resolution authorising the city to accept payment and for the mayor to execute an agreement with New York State DOT for acquisition of additional property for the Vestalab bypass, pin 9048.26.221.
Questions or comments on this?
Mr. President?
Yes, one, Resnetti, please.
Yeah, hi, I'd like to make a motion to hold this over, please.
Do I have a second and holding it over?
Second.
Okay, that is held over.
That's still held.
Sharon, can you explain a no vote on this, R.L., please, what that means to the city, what it means for the city?
Sure, and I'd be happy to discuss this in later detail if people have additional questions. So failing to approve the $15,000 acquisition by New York State does not affect New York State's authority, ability, or actual intent to take the property. They're going to take it anyway, they've submitted the map, they've done everything they're supposed to do. The only difference is whether or not $15,000 is a fair payment for it. So the city would have to challenge the assessment, we'd have to get an appraisal, we have to take it to court, and have the court approve the amount based off of whatever we have submitted. So any event council fails to approve New York State's acquisition, it's really just a matter of the time the city's going to take arguing the amount of money it's compensated for, if that makes sense.
It does. Any questions on that, as Sharon just spoke of?
Yeah, yeah, I do. So if the DOT is just going to take it, and we're not going to argue about the money, then there won't be any time lost, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But the DOT is going to, going to take it and act on it on their schedule. You know, whether or not council approves the total amount of money, it's not as if we can enjoin, i.e. file an action, to stop them from doing it until we decide on the correct amount. They're going to take it and act regardless. However, if council has questions as to whether or not this is what we would call good and valuable consideration for the property, I'm happy to try and present that with our assessor, you know, prior to the next business meeting.
I have a question, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Who, who did the assessment? Was it our city assessor or was it a DOT assessor or someone else?
Our assessor approved $15,000 as fair value for the property.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't know what the source of the original $15,000 offer was. I imagine that came from the DOT.
If anybody has more questions on this, we certainly have another work session left before we have to bubble this again. Councilwoman Riley, please.
Yes, I just, I do want to know, so we can utilise this time to fact find, why are we holding it over, Councilwoman Resnetti? Is it something we need to research?
I just felt like we didn't have a whole lot of information regarding the assessment, regarding whether or not of what really matters in any way, and it almost sounds like it doesn't. I mean, really, that was it.
So I now look to the councilmen that are representative of these districts, and what, are you hearing feedback from your constituents about receiving this money? Anything?
Councilman Burns.
Yeah, what I hear, and what I've been saying for a long time, is that the Ivanhoe entrance to the Greenway project, the people that live on Ivanhoe, except for the one person that I discovered, and the people that surround Ivanhoe do not want the entrance on Ivanhoe. The city or the DOT, whoever it is, they are not going to put any parking there. So people are going to be parking on Ivanhoe, it's going to be, their privacy is going to be somewhat interfered with. The people that own the property on Vestal Avenue have owned it for 30 years, they've paid their taxes for 30 years, and they do not want to sell it to the DOT. The DOT is going to steal it from them. And I think it's, they don't need it for the project. There's an entrance at MacArthur High School, there'll be an entrance at the, where 434 and Vestal Avenue meet. And if you're going to enter there and go towards the university, you actually have to walk one-third of the way back to MacArthur School before you meet the main Greenway and then go back to the school. So it looks like, it looks nice on paper, sure it'll be beautiful from the, from the hot air balloon that we talked about earlier, but the people don't want it. And, and so I represent them. And so my feeling is that by saying yes to this, we are saying to them, the people in that neighborhood, because they can't go ahead, if they don't get this property, and I guess they're just going to take it anyway, but if they, if they don't get this property, then there's no reason for them to take the other people's property because they can't get through. So by us saying yes, we're saying that, yeah, it's fine, do whatever you want to this neighbourhood, even though the neighbourhood doesn't want it. That's it for me, thanks.
Other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I would, this is, this is Sharon. Councilman Burns, well heard and received, as you know, I'm a resident of the South Side. I just want to clarify that unfortunately, the state has an absolute right to acquire property for a public purpose, and they've chosen this one. And I think your points are valid, and I'm happy to discuss particularly and have the assessor come and tell you whether or not it's a fair value. the assessor come and tell you whether or not it's a fair value, which is unfortunately the only point of jurisdiction and control that, that we have.
All right, since we've, since this has been held over, let's, let's, we'll save our discussion for the next Monday's work session, and we can discuss some more. There's certainly to be more discussion on this, I'm not sure.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Yes, Councilman Strong.
I just wanted to say that I, I support the South Side residents, I support Councilman Burns on this, and it might be a, I hope it's not a horrible waste of other city resources, I hope. I'm not worried about the price, quite frankly, and, and I've never questioned that the city, the state has the right to do it, I know they do. I think it's a horrible use of their power when this is a recreational purpose, quite frankly. This is not a hospital, it's not a levee, it's not whatever. And I realize that what I'm saying makes no difference at all, other than, I think it does make a statement and a comment. That's, that's how I feel about it. I hope that it, I, I don't, for me personally, I don't even care if the assessor comes or not, I don't necessarily need to hear from the assessor. I think, I think, I do think, now that you mentioned, this is a little different conversation than we had before, in the sense that when Councilman, Councilman Burns asked before, I thought the comment came back that they just basically had to go through a process to get it. I think Councilman Burns made the comment, well, let them take it from us, just the same way that they're going to take it from those other city residents, not the fact that we're going to haggle over the price necessarily, and that may or may not be true. But, but, but now that that has been brought up, I'm not sure why the assessor didn't come to one of the work sessions when they originally presented this then and tell us. I mean, I, it's an honest question at this point, why didn't he just come, and, and why wasn't he on the agenda when we did this? If that, if that was the real point of just the, the price, then, you know, if we're selling city property, I think maybe we should hear from the assessor, why they came up with, with what they came up with. And I had asked before, how many other city residents do they have to take it from, and it may or may not be relevant, but, you know, it was a point that, that was asked for, so I'm not sure if we can get that answered by the next time, because I would like to, I would like to know that, how many other people. But in my opinion, once, depending on whatever the vote ends up being, I think, I think we should, I think we should authorize, you know, corporate counsel to take their path of least resistance, so it doesn't, you know, take other city resources away as much as we can, if, if it were to go to a negative vote, and if it's positive, then I guess it's a moot point. So, thank you.
Yes, anybody else like to speak on this? Councilwoman Riley?
Just one more thing, as Councilman Strong mentioned, we did also ask for a map, and the goal, the entire project map, so we could see how many plots were forthcoming in their ask. I don't think we received that either.
You have other comments?
Lee, tomorrow, let's ensure that council receives the distribution of the New York State plan as we've received it.
But, but, can I talk?
Sure, go ahead.
On that thing they're going to give us, is it showing us whose, whose property is being taken? I wish it would show us whose property is being taken, and who, who's against, who doesn't want their property taken. If you're down Vestal Avenue, I, I've only dealt with Ivanhoe, but if you go further down, there's several people with signs up saying they're against the, the Greenway project, you know, they're like political signs, and they're on people's lawns. So I'd like to know how many they're taking, and how many they're stealing, really, but that's another story.
Councilman Burns, with all due respect, I, I beg to the point like I said a couple weeks ago, it doesn't matter, unfortunately, it doesn't matter. I don't like the rule of the state can do what they want, they can take what they want. I don't know what the issue is about seeing a map either, I don't understand. What's, what's the point of seeing a map if we have no choice on what they're taking?
Just so I can tell people in my district.
And so we can see the plan, so we can visually depict what plots of land are being requested, or whatever language you want to use. We need to see it.
Right, and I would have to agree with that totally, with all respect. It just feels like we need to do diligence, and that there's just some information that's missing. That's all.
Any question, the other question or comments on this? All right, let's move on, please. Other communication, council members, we're on to, I think, believe we started with, Councilman Burns, please.
Whoa. It's been a hell of a week. Painful week for our, for our country, and for our city, painful and awakening at the same time. And, you know, I, I don't really know what to say, other than, you know, I hope that somehow we can, we can get together, and, you know, people were talking about that there's no leadership from Washington or something, you know, I don't know if you're, whether or not you're a fan of the president, or not a fan of the president, they talk about leadership, and I, and I, I would love to chat with all, with all of you about how we can somehow lead our way out of what, of what we're all finding out and discovering. What happened at the park, I mean, that was so heartbreaking to me. On the other hand, I heard a poem, some poetry by some young black students at the high school the day of the march, and quite frankly, I didn't know that it was high school students that felt the way they felt. So I, I, somehow we've got a, we got a, figured that we had to lead through this somehow, and I'd like to talk to everybody individually, or together, or whatever, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burns. On to Councilman Skrungy, please. Councilman Skrungy, please.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a, it's been a very rough week. I want to thank all of our residents for holding up the way they have in the wake of what we've experienced over this last week. I know many people, the very next morning, that happened with the events that happened over in Rec Park, a lot of city residents actually went to Rec Park the very next morning, early in the morning, so much to the point that if you got there early enough, as the sun was beginning to rise, you could actually still smell the fire and the smud from the, the disgusting act that was perpetrated on the park. It's been pretty horrible to drive down Main Street and see the language that has been printed on the Masonic Temple, to see the act that was done in Rec Park, small businesses that have had their windows bashed in, and everything that they've gone through, but we'll rebuild it, and we'll be better forward in the end, and I want to take, I want to take one moment just to thank all of our policewomen and our policemen, who, Broom County sheriffs, New York State troopers, first responders, firefighters that were right downtown, particularly over the last couple days, as we've had gatherings of people getting together and expressing their opinions on things, and the professionalism that they carried, the courtesy that they carried, even in the light of not-so-nice language, and that's it.
Thank you, councilman. And to Councilwoman Riley, please.
Thank you, President Scanlon. So yes, this has been a very challenging week, and I think the week only highlights years, years, and I think I brought a part of it on Monday. But what I've come to know is that, and I, I look back on James Baldwin, when I say, we can agree to disagree and still love one another unless the disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist. We talk about what has happened, but I want you all to remember, George, George Floyd was not the cause of the unrest. The actions against him were the straw that broke the camel's back. Okay? We also must remember, as my co-councilman said, the activism, the spirit, the, the, the emotion, as I've heard quite a bit, comes from the inability to verbalize the discontent, and it is until you have understood the plight of even trying to get a house in Binghamton without being asked your qualifications and your CV, then you can have a better discussion. When you desire to understand, that's when we can have the discussion. So I want to highlight the young people that came up with the idea of having a protest to, again, bring to the forefront the discussion, to show their form of activism. But I also want to recognize you guys, because activism comes in different forms. We are activists, and I want to remind you guys that you are here to legislate on behalf of your people, and not just the people that look like you. So I want to encourage everyone here, I want to continue to encourage our students, I want to continue to encourage all of us, because, again, we don't have to agree, but we do have to talk, and we have the power to make change when we work together as one voice. So as I close, I'm going to ask that we have a moment of silence, a 30-second moment of silence, for the names I did not call, the names I cannot call in the rest of this meeting, but I'll just name a few, because, again, it wasn't just George Floyd. It's George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade, Nina Pop, Sean Reed in the past few weeks. So 30 seconds. So again, I spoke those names, let us hold them in our hearts and move forward to create a better world. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And to Councilwoman Resonetti, please.
Thank you. It really has been a very difficult week, and thank you all for talking about it, being open about what it's meant to you, and, you know, what it means to our community. I do want to say that I am so proud of all those in our community who participated in such meaningful and peaceful protests this past week. It was so moving for me to see our community come together to highlight such a powerful message. And I also want to thank Binghamton Police Department for ensuring their residents stayed safe and stayed protected during such events. I, I witnessed tremendous respect and professionalism from both sides, from, you know, police officers and protesters, so I'm very proud for that. I also want to say thank you to our fire department for their response to the arson that happened to our space, and certainly, and all of our community, really, that the response has been absolutely amazing. Here's, you know, another example of our community coming together, even in the middle of some very tense moments. Our space symbolizes inclusion. It was built for kids that come from all different backgrounds and have all kinds of abilities. So those differences kind of fell to the side as we came together to think of the greater good. So with that, I just want to say that I do hope that we continue to talk, and continue to move forward, and continue to respect and love and care each other, and like all of you said, and Councilwoman Riley, it is okay to disagree, it is okay to not see eye to eye, but it's important to care and to reach out. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And to Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, what a week, evidenced by the fact that the global pandemic kind of fell on the back burner, you know, that's some intense events that are happening that, that kind of became secondary. I, I think it was extremely powerful how many people came together to protest, and this is something that probably, I, I think this is an unpopular opinion that I hold, but I, I feel obligated to say it, that the, the destruction of the playground was so sad. I mean, that really was so, so sad. You know, what a shame. I implore us to not let property damage eclipse the righteous anger that a lot of people are feeling, that this is the result of years and years of distrust and mistreatment, and, you know, it, I don't even think that the people who burned down the playground were related to the protest, I don't know, but I ju, I think that there's a dangerous precedent in discrediting people who are maybe not even related to the protests because somebody else damaged some property. And while, you know, let me say again, it is so sad that that happened, but that can be replaced, thankfully, but the lives that are continually lost cannot be replaced. It's also Pride Month this, this month, and we think back to the Stonewall riots, that was, those were riots that were started by black, trans women who threw bricks in protest of police brutality. So this has been something that, you know, has been causing tension for many, 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 many years, and while it's sad that it's come to this boiling point, I think we need to take a look at a critical lens and think about what, what is irreplaceable. Human life is irreplaceable. Property damage, it is expensive and annoying and sad when it's damaged and replaced, but it, it is replaceable, thank God. Human life is not, and, and I encourage us to take a step back and, and, you know, think about what, what are we really, really trying to protect here? And I implore that, that, the answer to that question to be human life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And to Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I have a whole bunch of emotions. It's been a, it's been a long couple months, actually, and this week was just whatever. I mean, I live for levity, and, and so don't take this the wrong way, I just saw a tweet, and somebody said we missed the murder hornets somewhere in between the, the pandemic and what happened, and I'm saying that to make it, make, I just, I just like, this is so hard, like, how do you even deal with it? So I'm sad that we can't, what happened to, to Mr. Floyd is, is unconscionable, it's disgusting. I, I've never seen anything like that, that, that made me so angry, and I, but I'm also sad that the conversation couldn't have moved more quickly from what happened to him directly to, to some of the, the things that Councilwoman Riley said, that it's getting caught in the middle of this distinction, and, and, you know, I respect Councilwoman Freeman's, what she said, but riots and protests are not the same thing. We have a system, you know, people need to go vote in November. If you don't like what's happening, you need to vote. If you don't like Donald Trump, throw him out, throw him out of office, whatever, that's, that's our system, and while I realize that you can replace property and not lives, I'm thankful that at Rec Park, at the very least, they didn't take that carousel, because to me, that would have been a real tragedy of history, and there would have been a crux of good history to look back on, and some of these other... other things, unfortunately, were our bad history to look back on, but still history nonetheless. And to see that carousel and what it meant to kids 100 years ago and what it still means to kids today, I'm thankful that at least, that would have been a lot harder to replace than the playground. But I also see property, maybe not in Binghamton, but in other cities, in these areas where while it might directly affect somebody's life, it comes close when they can't get their prescriptions, they can't get food, they can't get necessities. You see people weeping because they, they've been fighting for 10 years to get a CVS so they can get their prescriptions and get some necessities. I can only hope that CVS or whatever store comes back. I saw a picture today with National Guard, I think in Minneapolis, guarding a market in Minneapolis that didn't get destroyed, just so the people in that area still had a place to go to get groceries. They call it food deserts. And I know even on the north side of Binghamton, we've had some issues with that, and that new grocery store coming in means something to them. So I agree that it's, if you really draw, if you really, if that, but to me, that's somewhat of a false premise of property versus life, while it's technically true. I think this property destruction is just completely irrational, and even that playground, look at this, look at the kids of all stripes that can't use that, and families that can't enjoy that right now. What does that do for our community? It really, it really detracts from our community. So I just hope that we can get back to the conversation we need to have, what the true issues of what happened to Mr. Floyd and other, the other people that Councilwoman Riley, women Riley mentioned. We need to get back to that conversation as soon as possible. And I feel bad that it's slightly distorted by the, by the destruction of property. And I also realize that a lot of these things happen out of town, people, blah, 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 but it's still destruction nonetheless. I do want to quickly thank our, I've heard stories of police hugging people, I've heard stories of people, of our policemen kneeling with people. I saw people coming up Beethoven to the protests, and everybody, they had black on, but they were quiet, they were, they had signs, they had their stuff, but they were, they were peaceful and respectful, and that's really what it's all about. So, you know, last, last thought is that in any industry, I've known accountants that had to go to jail because they helped people evade their taxes, they should go to jail. I've heard of all industries, all different things, of people doing things that they shouldn't do, bad actors, bad apples, whatever you want to say. They need to be, I'm glad that they upped the charges today to that, 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 that clown for, he's whatever, he's worse than that, it's a second-degree murder. I'm glad that they did that. He needs to go away forever. But at the same time, you can't disparage all police. I don't think any, any livelihood, any profession, any whatever, that you can disparage all of them for, just for the bad people. And I've heard great things about what the Binghamton first responders did, the Binghamton police did, and I just pray that that never happens to one of our officers, and if it were to have happened in an unfortunate situation, that they would be dealt with swiftly, and, and how it looks like this other, this other guy's being dealt with. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. I think Binghamton can be proud of the, they had two protests, well-attended protests, large numbers of people, and they were peaceful protests. And that's a great thing. And I also don't believe anything that happened at Rec Park with the arson was tied to the protests. I don't believe, I don't believe it, I hope not, I don't believe it was. I'm here to say I support the police 100%. And I would encourage anybody on council, and by the way, I believe this is available for any resident in the city of Binghamton, to do a ride-along with the Binghamton Police Department and watch the men and women, how they operate professionally, and they're doing a tough job out there. So I support them 100%. I, I enjoy the fact that, I'm happy the fact that when, if I need the police department in my house, they would be there in a heartbeat, just like anybody's house. They would go, they're protecting the city, and it's not an easy job, I encourage you to do a ride-along once, to see what they do out there. That's all from me, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We're adjourned.